Okay, I'd like to welcome you all to the April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two ZBA hearing. We can introduce ourselves. Kathy, you can.
Kathy Mayo. Teresa Bascom.
I'm Terry Bonza.
Kevin Bassett, alternate.
Okay, so let me.
Do we have to?
Read the rules first. I gotta just read the rules for the meeting. The chairperson shall call the hearing into session and read the applications. Members of the boards may ask, members of the board may ask questions at any point during the testimony. Each person who appears shall be required to state their name and their address, indicate their affiliation with the case. Any member of the board through the chairman may request any party of the case to speak a second time. Any party of the case who wants to ask a question of another party of the case must do through, do so through the chairperson. The application shall be called to present, the applicant shall be called to present their case and those abutters in favor shall be allowed to speak. The abutters in opposition shall be allowed to speak. The board will hear any evidence pertaining to the case from the other parties that wish to speak. The application and those in favor shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. Those in opposition shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. The chairman shall, then, after that, the hearing will be closed and we'll discuss amongst ourselves on the hearing. So, let's see. So, we have two cases tonight, so the first one will be.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, need to see.
Well, I'm gonna appoint him after.
Okay.
Open it, so. So, this is case twenty-two zero zero two VA. Applicant Edward Sweat requesting a variance from Article Two, Section C Three, B ten of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit an existing structure to be cons, to be considered an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, and allowed for a new detached, allowed for a new detached residential structure to be built. Property is located at one White's Grove Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map sixty-three eighty-six. We come up to the thing. Okay, we're, we're missing, well, we're missing two members, but we have Kevin as an alter, so I'll appoint Kevin to sit in for Bonnie. You're gonna, you're gonna be sitting in for Bonnie. I know, I, I know.
Your call.
Yeah, yeah. She's the one that wrote us, so. I don't, Romeo could wander in, so. Okay, so I'm gonna open the case and so you can come up. You're Edward.
Uh, yep, my name is Edward Sweet.
Okay.
I am the owner at one White's Grove Road, and what I'm looking to do is essentially build a new primary residence on the property that is larger so that I can accommodate my family, and I don't want to rip down the current structure that's there, so I would like that to become an ADU after the fact, a detached ADU. And that's, that's really the entire thing, is I just wanna be able, I know it's a little, it's a little confusing, but I want to not add an ADU, but add a primary structure and then use the structure that's there to be the ADU.
You're doing it in reverse.
In reverse, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so you could read the, the, you get the five criteria. Do you have your application?
Um, I don't have my application in front of me, I just have the.
Kevin, do you have something? He can read those.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the other thing I should let you know is we only have four bed, four, four board members, which you, you're entitled to have five, so.
Okay, that's fine.
If you, you know, you can go on with the hearing, you can, you can, even at the very end, before we deliberate, you can say, no, I wanna continue or I want a foreboard, so.
Okay, perfect.
Kevin, do you want, is that a new for mine?
That's fine.
You're not gonna keep typing in?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
I have it there.
So, what you do is just read, just read.
Yep.
Just to be clear.
Pardon?
Four members, is that if there's a tie, it's a denial?
Yes, a tie would be a denial.
Just make sure that.
Right, we'll make.
He, he knows those facts.
Okay. So, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because no changes to the public interest. I don't feel like there's really any change to anything on the land other than, you know, maybe taking some trees down for clearing for the, for the new build. The variance were granted, the split of the ordinance, ordinance would be observed because typically the ADU is built second, but by allowing the existing detached structure to become the ADU, the end result is the same. And then I just said in parentheses, if I, if I tore down the existing structure and built a primary residence and then ADU, it would kind of be the end, the same result, just kind of doing it reverse. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because due to job changes, we need to move back to the area. An existing structure does not support my current family size, which is now spouse and four children. I have a six-week-year-old.
That's nice, yes.
Thank you, very much. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. The existing structure has, has been there for seventy-two years, and a new primary residence would only increase property values. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public's purposes of the ordinance provision and specific application of that provision to the property because unconventional, because it's unconventional due to the primary residence being added after the existing structure is already in place, and the proposed use is a reasonable one because new primary residence will be occupied, and exists, existing structure meets criteria for an ADU, neither of which affect the general public. Be explaining how if the criteria in the subpar paragraph A are not established, any unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that diminished it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict performance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necess, necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. The financial impact of moving a seventy-two-year-old structure just to rebuild it after the primary residence structure is built would be substantial, and additionally, this would be, this would decrease duration of construction, and we need the residence to support current family size. That's it.
Okay. Does anybody have questions?
Notice from your map that the primary dwelling is going to be totally separate from, other than attached to the ADU. Is there any particular reason why you're not just adding to the existing structure?
Uh, the only reason is I don't think the dimensions would allow for a building in that spot because it's a grandfathered house, and that, I think the setbacks currently for the grandfathered existing dwelling is, I think it's like twenty-five to the road or something, so I don't know that you would even allow.
Right, you, you'd need it here for other variances on.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I, I don't necessarily, if, if, we're currently renting it out, and I don't necessarily want to kind of deter that decision later. If I wanted to rent out that additional dwelling, I don't wanna, you know, be attached to another family.
So then, the four-point-six-three acres is this direction on your map? What is, and the lot is separate? Is that what it is?
Um, no, it's all, it's all one lot. It, it was at one time two separate lots, but it was, it was combined into one lot during that subdivision in two thousand and nineteen.
So, I'm confused as to why you're saying that four-point-six-three acres would not hold a larger structure?
Um, so, the, the setbacks of the existing structure are there. I, I don't think that I would be able to attach the two, if, if that makes sense, because based on where the house is located now, it's only like twenty-five feet from both one fifty-six and, so, yeah, White's Grove Road. So, essentially, if I were to try to build a house attached to it, I would be breaking the setback rules in itself.
But it's already broken.
Well, the grandfather did, yeah, sorry.
The grandfather, it's been there, what, seventy, seventy-two years?
Seventy-two years, yeah, it's, they're already, I mean, yeah.
How, how long have you owned it?
Uh, six years, I wanna say, five, five or six years now?
Five or six years?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause you got four-point-six acres. Do you go, this, I know when you go by there, there's a wall, do you own to the wall? Is that where?
Uh, like that fence that's there, you mean?
Oh, there's a, no, but over on the, like, as you go by, looking at it on the right-hand side, there's White's property on the.
There's, uh.
One of them, is that, but there was a stone wall through there, is that your line?
Yeah, there's a stone wall that goes behind it. If you're standing on White's Grove Road looking at it, there's a stone wall that goes behind it, and then a stone wall that kind of cuts it right in the middle.
Oh.
Which I don't plan on touching the stone wall at all, I would just be on to the right side of the stone wall.
You're gonna get, like, a new septic design on both of them?
Yeah, I'll get a whole new, a new septic.
That was, I was gonna ask that, so that, the current home there already uses that septic that's on the print?
Uh, so it doesn't. It's, it's an older septic, so it doesn't have anything that's like state-approved at this time, but I would be tying both residences into a new, you know, state-approved one.
What is that, like, just one bedroom or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a one, it's a one-bedroom, one-bath. There's like an office slash laundry room that's not really considered, I wouldn't consider it a bedroom, I don't think you could fit a bed in there, but that's, that's the other room in the house, besides the kitchen and the living rooms.
Did a nice job fixing it up.
Thank you. It was a lot of work.
Yeah, it's been there a long time, I can remember.
I can't believe it was seventy-two years when, uh, meaning seventy-two.
Yeah.
Before, it did look like it was seventy-two, now it doesn't, but, so it's really, yeah.
I have so many pictures of this thing, like, the paint's just like falling off, and it's, it's up on stilts, and it was, yeah.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Kevin, any other questions?
Yes. Um, do you have Article Two, C three, B ten?
Oh, I do, yep.
In front of you?
I can in fifteen minutes. Article Two, Section Two, B E, three B is the ADU must be developed in a manner which does not alter the character or appearance of the principal dwelling unit as a single-family residence.
What page you on?
Page three of our zoning ordinance.
And this is March ten, twenty-twenty?
Pardon me?
Version?
Twelve March twenty-nineteen. You have a newer?
Ten March twenty-twenty.
I do not have that one in my binder. So, what does yours say?
It should be called.
Mine isn't on page three.
In the zoning ordinance? Page twenty-three?
Index, I think.
Page twenty-three is open space.
No, he said page three.
Oh, page four.
He said page. ADU.
I didn't either, that's what I was looking for. That's why I went to the state book on the, on the ADUs.
I think it's left a couple pages.
Yeah.
See it, but I don't see it.
I got it, it mentions ADU in Section Two on page two, and it's alphabetical, not numbered. Shall be a secondary and accessory to a principal family single dwelling unit. Shall not be considered to be an additional dwelling unit for the purpose of determining minimum lot size. Only one ADU shall be allowed per principal. It's all on page two and three of the version I have.
Right, we've, I mean, we've done, I think we did one separate detached one, because if it wasn't detached, you, you wouldn't be in here, other than maybe for setbacks.
Right. I'd like to get a read of, correct.
Here, you're welcome to this.
And it should be the latest version, should it not?
Um, you can look at this, and you, do you want, do you have your state book with you?
Well.
A state book, it's on page.
Is it two, is it?
Four-sixty-one.
Verbatim?
No, actually, ours is, is more restrictive, which I didn't.
I mean, the first reason why I'm doing is if, will we really Article Two, C three, B ten? That's what I'm, first thing.
Article Two, this is Section Two.
Where are you?
Here's the.
Limitations.
Four hundred and eleven.
See, I see this.
Nope.
Here it is. Two, C, three, B, no ten.
Article Two, C.
Yeah, we could ask Kevin if this is latest.
Yeah, so, um.
Kevin?
And there is no B ten.
Can we interrupt for a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you validate that the zoning ordinance's latest rev is?
Yeah.
March ten, twenty-twenty?
What was that?
March ten, twenty-twenty, zoning ordinance?
The most updated?
Yes, sir.
It is June twentieth, I'm sorry, June twenty-twenty-one.
So, none of us have the most updated version.
Okay, so that's, that's just a future action, but I'd like to get a read of the latest.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm actually looking at myself just to see.
So, while he's doing that.
Kathy, do you have it in your binder? Do you have the ZO?
I don't, no.
You don't have the ZO at all? Yes, you have it.
I do, but March twenty.
Oh, you know, by the way, we're just to show the newest number.
I'm, 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 I mean, no.
I think.
Oh, hold on. Eight, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. That's, that's the newest, okay. So, you should have the newest. Do you mind, could you pass yours over to?
On page five.
I'm working on going, what are you getting, three and all?
So.
Okay.
I'll give you the, I think, so, this came off of the, with the building inspector, the analogy, I think he, puts it wrong, section.
You put the wrong section.
Yeah, it's Section Seven, B ten.
Okay.
Article Two, C, seven, B ten, seven.
Did that come out right?
Article Two, Section.
Seven.
Number seven.
Nope. Say again?
Yeah.
Article Two.
Yep.
Section C.
Eight.
Number seven. Then, onto B.
B.
Then, number ten under that B. Sorry.
So, it's the ADU shall have an interior door provided between the principal dwelling unit and the ADU?
That's right.
Yep, if I remember correctly, we took all the ADU stuff from Section Two and made it its own section when he did that. So, this stuff is there, it just was made into its own section.
Yeah, you made it, I'm off, I'm a little older.
I am.
It seems like we're all. I, I just pulled one off the website, it's the most updated.
Please, um, make a point to put the newer ones in our binder.
Yeah, I'll put them in, yeah.
Thank you very much. So, Kevin, do you have a question now that we know where we are?
Do you have other questions, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I, you know, there's an issue that says an ADU is permitted on a residential property with the owner of record or the property personally resides, and at this time you do not.
At this time I did not, correct, but I would.
An ADU is supposed to be attached with a door, and thus it's defined as an ADU, and in some extent it shall never be rented as a rental. And he is, the application specifically says be considered an accessory dwelling unit, ADU. Moving the old building, have you, has that been considered at all?
Uh, that would be kind of, I know, not really. Like, moving it to where the new one would be built, uh, that expense.
Is it still on stilts and?
Uh, no, it's, it has a basement, so that would be difficult, too.
Yeah, understood. And had you at, at all considered moving the new building up, up to the, I'll say, the back edge of the, the old building?
Honestly, I haven't, but I don't, I don't know if, I, I just don't really want it there, to be honest with you, but.
Understood. If we approve it for an ADU, is it always an ADU?
That's what it would be assigned as.
Yeah.
So, is the concern that there's currently renters there, is that more?
Well, you made a comment that, you know, in the future, the, I'll say, in-laws or whatever the ADU was intended for, they're no longer there, then what do you do with it?
Right, it's just.
And then if it's an attached building, building to your residential, it becomes pure residential.
Right.
But it's always an ADU. That's sort of what I'm asking for guidance for. I don't know, is once it's an ADU, is it always an ADU? I assume it could be turned back into a single-family residence.
Well, then you'd have two, two residents on the same lawn, wouldn't you?
No, it's all one building, one resident.
Oh, you're talking about if it was attached.
It's just, yeah, you know, the, the four build, the four rooms in the ADU, for instance, just becomes part of the main residence if, if there's no.
If it's attached.
Because it's made for elderly, elderly support, right? And that's why we permit it. I'm not trying to hit you hard on this, I'm just trying to.
No, no, I, I completely understand.
Because, so do we know that? Once an ADU, always an ADU?
I don't seem to.
I assume, well, I mean.
That would help my decision if I, I had some guidance on that.
I think the owner would have to rescind it, but that, that would be the only, if there'd be any other.
It does say in the state law that a municipality may not require a familial relationship between the occupants of an ADU and the occupants of a principal dwelling unit. So, you're not required.
Right, it used to.
Not required that it's family.
Correct.
Yeah, not required, it's, it used to be, but now it's not.
That's in our brand-new book, until this year's comes out.
What, what page you reading, may I ask?
I'll use the page number now, it's four-sixty-two. And it's at the bottom of the page on the right-hand side.
Is it four-sixty-two?
Four-sixty-two, yes. Right there.
Four-sixty-two, okay, that's my thought was there.
This is why it's helpful to have all this stuff ahead of. Okay.
Does the size restriction keep it as an ADU because it has to be under seven hundred? It's a seven hundred.
Yep, it's, it's like, I think it's exactly seven hundred.
So, would that keep it as always having to be an ADU? Is, would your, is your concern, Kevin, that it's grown size? Add on to that ADU?
Well, the owner did submit that it could be a rental, and, and, but his, his application is for an ADU, so I, I'm just wondering, in the future, could it be a rental? And, and I'm just looking for some guidance on that.
Well, it doesn't say anything here about that, except that it says you can have, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be family, but it also says in six-seventy-fourth, seventy-three, same page, right-hand side, that you can have a detached ADU.
Right, we chose to have it attached. And then, and then our zoning ordinance just takes that further and says it shall have an interior door between the dwelling and the ADU, so they, the ordinance pulls them together.
Correct.
Okay.
But by state law, you can allow it.
Mm-hmm.
But by state law, it can be allowed. Jim, any more questions for him? John, did you want to speak?
Me?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I'm gonna ask, I was, well, I was.
You got to put a long hallway, I guess.
I know. Or a tunnel, right?
Yeah, a tunnel, yeah, a tunnel.
And where did you see that, that interior door is not needed?
I didn't say that.
Oh.
Not say that.
I think the interior door, it, you know, if it's attached, we're going to detached, no.
In Section Three, it does say interior doors.
We, when the speaker has to come up, but, um, until Terry discusses him.
You're, you're done with yours, right?
Yes.
Okay, you want to come up, John? Did you have something to?
I was just gonna bring some hindsight to ADUs for when I was on the board, many years ago, and this was brought up, and we changed the actual ADU from four hundred square feet, it was four-twenty, we went to seven-fifty. As you read the articles in the Nottingham zoning laws, I don't think we ever planned on this situation. We always figured somebody was adding on to their house, taking over their garage, doing something like this to make an ADU. I don't think we ever thought of somebody having a whole separate building away from an ADU. And, and again, I'm the direct abutter, I'm gonna be looking at this every day for my new house that I'm building. You know, the house that he did a great job and he built on it, and I can understand the new dwelling, there's plenty of land for it, because if you think, even if it's like a, you know, an apartment, we allow those in Nottingham, but you have to have four acres for each building. So, it's not like he has three, he does have four to support two buildings at two-acre lots, right? So, the lot is big enough to support two houses.
Right, he does have a lot of room.
You know, and the fact that he combines a septic, which is nice, because that, that can goes, he's working to go, to become part of an ADU, you know, whether he shares the same well or does two different wells, that's, again, that's not up to, I have no idea, that's up to planning and purpose. But you're stuck with a unique situation on how he's trying, what he's. But you're stuck with a unique situation on how he's try, what he's trying to do. And again, he can't build off, if he ever takes that seven fifty, he can't do anything with it, because he's already maxed. He can't put a porch on it, he can't add an extra room to it, he can't do anything. The buil, the building inspector will not let him change the size of that seven fifty now, because if he does, he loses his ADU status. All right, he'll never get a building permit for anything on that, that's it, place stays the same. You know, so I went, and again, where his house is going to sit, from where his plans are and how the lot looks, he's going to sit further enough away of these houses, you know, with the septic in the middle, that'll actually probably look like there'll be two lots. Now again, this isn't my decision to make, this is yours. You know, and, but you know, I can see, I don't think it's going to wreck any real character or do anything like this. I'm not actually really speaking for Mr. Sweet, I'm not speaking against Mr. Sweet. I understand what you guys are going on, I feel for you, because again, it's a situation where it's not very black and white for an approval or not, for what he's looking, because he does meet some of the criteria for an ADU. But yet he's not, you know, the fact that he's not combining it, and again, combining it from where that house is right now, where you think he'd be able to add on, he will limit the, the house that he can put, because the lot is so narrow at the road and pies itself out, for him to get more setback is to actually push it down the road into the deeper part of the lot. And then put a septic in the middle, or near that, that'll give him more space and setbacks for a septic. Because, I don't know where his well is on the other property, but.
Where is your well?
The, the well is like ten feet from one of the, it's like.
So good, it's on the right side, so that's, it's on the good side, so.
You're all right there.
He could put a septic in the middle.
That's.
I'm just curious, does anyone know why that was added to the Nottingham? But it's not in the state as far as the door, interior door?
Because we wrote that ordinance ourselves. So when we write it, when an ordinance happens like this, and when he changes, we make it to the Nottingham's ordinance, we collectively as a board, and then it goes to the planning board, which I was on that board when this was happening, and we make those changes, and we word it ourselves. And then we, we get, we, the state will take it, and the state will look at it and say, okay, that wording is correct, if you want to word it that way, to put into your zoning ordinance, it's from the legal aspect, so our zoning ordinance is not always going to dictate exactly what the book says, because we can add quirks, you know.
Right, it does stay in the state when that, it, the town is allowed to do that, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there was a particular situation that came up, and somebody said, well, you know, we really should change it, because.
I think it was just because of the fact we didn't, and I remember one case coming up, and I forgot where it was, I think it was on the other side of town, was they were actually have a garage that they were changing and making it to the ADU, but it was detached. So we actually made them connect a, like a breezeway. And it wasn't really one, it was just a, it was a, you know, little, but just to, to, were you there on the board with that, Theresa, whether we did that, whatever? Now it's just a, we've made it work for them, so, that's it, that's all I can say.
Yeah, we, I mean, we did one, uh.
Right here, it's number three.
We did one a couple of years ago, I remember for the couple, I think there were preschools, and it was detached, do you remember, were you on that one?
I recall.
Yeah. I don't remember the whole, what the circumstances were there, how much land they had. But I mean, you have, uh, I mean, to, to put an ADU on, I mean, mostly it's like a two-acre lot, you know, you get to add that extra ADU, you have actually, you know, four point six acres, so you have a unique, a, a much more unique situation for the, for the detached, and, uh, have you considered subdividing?
Yeah, uh, no.
Because?
Because the law just passed it, because that lot was subdivided to get the, uh, creative re-locks. It was supposed to be four lot when it came in, and there's statute that you have to wait to re-subdivide a lot, because sometimes. Just literally, the law just cut subdivided two years ago. I think there's actually a, a legal statute where you have to wait x amount of years before you can re-subdivide it, from the subdivision that just happened.
Right, that, you know that duration by chance?
Pardon me, devil? Me?
Or?
I heard also the real thing, I'm not about to air. No, yeah, I don't know the duration, um, but I didn't, I've never really.
So that law, that four point six came out of the White subdivision, the, well, the other, whatever the.
Yeah, it was supposed to be four lots.
Right.
Random lots. Combine him with that lot to one, lots of three random lots.
Okay.
That would solve some problems, if you could subdivide it. Then it could be an ADU, then you could rent it.
Right.
Then it, it alleviates that issue.
Although technically, Kevin, if you subdivided, it wouldn't be an ADU, it would be separate residence.
Yeah, but, but his family could live there, I mean, it could be, it could be acted as an ADU. No, his, his application would not say ADU in the future, but I, I get that, but he could use it as, 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 um, you know, elderly, which is sort of what ADUs are set up for, or he could rent it, which is a desirement that he stated.
I think originally, I mean, originally the state, yeah, you had to be a relative and, you know, but then they did away with that, I think they somewhat freed it up to allow anybody to stay there, and I don't think there's any requirements.
And what's the definition of an ADU then?
Just observed while you're, that's it.
I mean, I'm reading what the definition is, but.
Well, you could, you could have an, an individual that can't live on their own, requires a little bit more assistance, but doesn't necessarily need, you have to be an elderly person.
Well, true, but you could put another whole family in there, if that's the case.
Well, the hard part is, it's only seven hundred and fifty square feet.
So?
So you, um, don't typically see a whole entire family in this day and age.
Two million immigrants coming in this country, you, you think they live in closets, yes.
Oh, I hear you, but I'm saying, not, usually, yeah.
All right, do we have anybody else to speak on this? Okay, as I, I would, do you have more questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, well, as I said, you, you know, you, we only have four board members, so, you know, if they're two-to-two tie, it would be denied, you know, it wouldn't be granted, so. That's the reason you want a five-member board, if, you know, so, and you have that right up until, you know.
We vote.
We vote, so. So you, you know, you could do a continuance now if you want, or?
I don't know, it's, it's, it's a course.
Okay.
Do you want to?
Yep.
Are you guys going to read, could meet individual, uh, criteria and discuss, discuss about opening to the public, or are you just going to go straight to a vote?
We typically just go straight to a vote.
Well, we, we discuss it.
You want us saying whether they meet or meet or meet or not meet on all of the five criteria?
Well, again, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
We have not been doing that.
Okay, and it's just, it's a benefit for Mr. Sweet, you know, because then you have a discussion before you vote, you can actually still have the opportunity that they ask for a five-member board or a four-member board. But that changes it, not, maybe not, but it just may.
It would, it would be changing our protocol for this.
Sure, I get, I was just asking, I was just asking, just, I haven't been over, for a long time, so.
A year, just about a year, because I remember you sitting right there throwing your singer, the last time you were here.
So, yeah, so, again, I don't, I don't know, thanks, Jason, I'm trying to sound to your general approach.
I think you only, I mean, I think once we close the hearing, he's, he's stuck with a four-member board, so. You can make a decision before, you know, you can, you can ask for a continuance, and we can continue and get a five-member board.
That's, there's another thing, my, my wife has a job offer, she asked to tell me this week, yes or no, so.
Depend on this one.
Yeah.
So it's more, uh, urgent than?
Yeah.
Get her done.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any more?
Um, I just want, want a clarification, the seven hundred and fifty is just for the ADU, okay, answered that question. And we determined that the building is less than seven hundred and fifty.
Correct.
Yep, seven hundred, you said.
Okay, exactly. Understood, okay, I'm all set.
I, I just had one quick question, so, on the idea of separating the, the lot, like you had suggested, wouldn't that mean that you would also have to have separate septic and wells for now both of those?
Yes.
Right, which takes up more lot space, yeah.
Right, so we'd be probably back here asking that, because.
Well, he's our, that first lot is already all set. There isn't septic there. There's a septic on the lot, it's just not.
Yeah, and I was, uh, the, the building inspector a while back told me that, uh, if I was to have a bigger septic in or a different septic, I'd have to like basically leave, it's the one that's there, it's not seen. Why would I have to redo?
It's called pre-existing non-conforming. Grandfather, grandfather is not the, is not a term they use anymore.
Grandfather would live in the ADU, I.
That's right.
Okay, are we, do, I'm going to close the hearing, any more questions? Okay, I'm going to close this hearing, and we'll discuss it amongst ourselves and take a vote, so.
I'm, I'm due to go to vote.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this is a unique situation, it's four point six acres, it is different. We had granted one other one that was detached. And I understand it's been there seventy-two years, this one's close to the road, it's close to the other road, if you want to go back further, it's, it is a unique situation, but, and the state has, you know, it has loosened up the ADU quite a bit, so. Okay, do we have?
Anybody else have anything? All right, Mr. Chair, I move that be approved, the application from Edward Sweet, requesting a variance from, oh, I got to get that.
Article two.
Yeah, I lost that page though, you wrote it down. Article two, section C seven, B ten. From the, of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit an existing structure to be considered an ADU and allow for a new detached residential structure to be built. The property is located at one White's Road in Nottingham, and is identified as tax map sixty-three, lot eighty-six.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, we have a, um, motion to grant it and a second? Okay, all those in favor, signify by six, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So it's three to one.
Reminder that there's thirty days for somebody to appeal our decision. So although your wife can make her decision based on this, there may be something that comes up, okay?
Not a lot of rebutters, so you think. Usually, usually when the room is full, and there's a lot of shouting and yelling. You want to heed the thirty days.
No, no, no.
Okay, so that case is, okay, so that's over, um, thank you. Okay, we have one, another case, uh, twenty-two zero zero three VA. Okay, this is an application from BSC Group on behalf of Concrete Products of Londonderry, requesting a variance from article two, section E two G of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of a manufacturing facility that exceeds the thirty-four-foot maximum building height. Zoning ordinance, the property is located at one sixty Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, and is identified as tax map three, lot two. So who's representing? Is there anybody here? You're not for that?
I'm in a bar.
Oh, you, oh, you're in a bar?
Oh, wow.
I thought you were in.
No, he should be here, we've gone back and forth with him for months on that.
Okay. Well, then we will not open the hearing on it.
Well, just, we can continue it, I mean, we can, we can continue it, but, yes, we only go to continue it once.
So with them, uh, they actually were part of the planning again for other things.
Right.
The way this manifested was, uh, I think they wanted to find out if they could do the forty, want to do up to forty-eight feet.
Forty-eight?
Yeah.
I thought it was forty.
It's forty on the left, it's, there's a side that goes up to forty.
Oh, the side, yeah, from concrete, okay.
It's forty feet, and then.
The building is forty, okay.
Um, so I think they wanted to see if they could do that, get the variance first, but they're still, they're still working getting plans to the building inspector. Uh, I know that they have a concrete pad that's in question too, for setback reasons, um, and they haven't quite finished getting the plan to the building inspector yet, so we could tack this on to a building.
Yeah, I mean, they knew this hearing was coming up.
That's correct.
Right, and, um, yeah, because, I mean, we can continue it, you know, well, we could continue or attach it, I don't know how we would do it if we.
It's up to you, I can't make a resubmit.
I mean.
You've already read, read the notice, which opened, opens it, so we could go to it, they, to be determined, John?
Because they're asking for a variance on the height, and that height ordinance is reflective of resulting from the fire department's.
We already talked to them about that.
Oh, is there a letter in the file?
Right, there's a letter now, so.
I, I spoke, I spoke with Kevin today, and I said, do we have anything on the height from the fire department? And he said, told me he did, but they did not, um, put it in writing, so I've asked to have it put in writing.
We have feedback from the fire chief, we have the fire chief, we have feedback on it. Uh, he put it in writing, but it wasn't, it kind of just offset it, he said, hey, it doesn't fit this zone, but we have it, so, um, but I can't have.
Is there other building forty feet, I assume it is.
We can't really discuss the case without opening up the whole thing, though, right?
I'll, I'll, here's the fire department, that's saying, that's all, I'm trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good, I have no other questions.
Okay, but, yeah.
Well, the case is open, I mean, but, we've opened it, but nobody's here.
That's true.
I wouldn't have opened it, because I thought he was representing.
Me too.
But you were just going to ask, Terry, is this the, now the highest industrial building in town?
No, but I was just going to say, there are other buildings must be same height, they got cranked and, I assume. But they must have got a variance someplace.
Is this the first?
So that I don't know, so, I know that they, I don't know if I can speak on this, but I know that they, that they're looking to add hoisting equipment, so they need that height.
Right, I mean, that's what they have now, that building, you know.
Not that I know, because, yeah, but I can't really say that.
Oh, you don't think, okay, I thought maybe they made a fact.
I feel like they are getting bigger with it, which is why they, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the answer.
That, that was my impression, based on what we have in the file.
That's my understanding, I just don't want to get, I don't want to speak too much more.
Okay, well, um, I'll make a.
The information from the fire chief?
It's in an email.
Does not necessarily say that he agrees.
Well, in, Terry and I discussed that, yeah, I, I'm sorry, Theresa and I discussed that.
That's okay.
I said I'll have the chief put a little bit more clear writing.
Understood, okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this case to a date to be determined by the applicant?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll second that. Okay, so it's been a motion and a second to continue the case, and the time will be determined by the applicant of when the case will be heard, so. Okay, all those in favor, if you were saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, all of the both, nobody, okay. So that was that.
So, um, Kevin. Where the applicant isn't here, and we don't. Where the applicant isn't here and we don't have a date to be determined, butters will have to be re-notified, correct? So you will get a notification of when we'll be hearing this again, okay? So you won't, you won't be left in the dark.
I'll be here.
Oh, we're sorry. Okay.
It was interesting anyway.
Thank you.
That's fine.
John, you just don't get around enough, I guess, huh? I said you don't get around enough to meet people.
Don't even board member or not.
I come to tons of meetings.
You could always be an author.
I could fill in and be the fifth person. So tell yourself, Jordan, you could be there before you know it. Unless you come in next year, we don't know.
Okay, is that it?
Public comment.
But we can't hear anything from you, I don't hear a whistle.
No, there's nothing to hear really, but, um. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the, let's see, the other business. Other business is the election of the board officers. The review of the zoning board bylaws. And the discussion of the other case. We haven't heard, just to go to that case quick. The garrison, we haven't heard anything, I saw that for sale online, so.
That's the next wrinkle.
Yeah, so. And he got a septic though, right, I mean, he got another septic, I saw that someplace too.
He did.
Yeah. So he got it approved for.
They get it approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, 'cause none of that's, it's the shed with the.
Correct.
Right, and that, you know, so.
Could I just ask for the people in the audience to carry, could you ask them to step up, please? Thank you, John.
I should know better than to apologize.
Thank you. Bye, take care.
Okay, yeah, that's all I saw of that one, I saw it for sale, I saw this place for sale and I said, oh, that's a garrison that was.
I'm already yielding calls.
Oh.
So that's for sale, so is this person not going to want their place?
Well, I would assume then, if somebody buys it, the new person would have to come in for a variance.
So I offered it to him before, previously, I said, hey, we're willing to, you have a case and. Uh, as I think I mentioned before, previous meetings, I said he doesn't have the bandwidth. Um, so it doesn't really seem like he, he's committed to it clearly, you know, for sale.
Yeah, that, that shows a little, yeah.
Okay, well, if we're gonna skip to that case though.
No, I was just moving down to that one.
Okay.
So we'll do, uh, the election of board officers?
I, I move for Terry Bonzer to be chair.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint me as chair, all those in favor? Everybody aye, right? Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Teresa Bascom as the vice chair. Okay, I have a motion and a second on that, all those favor, aye? Okay, please.
Okay, no change to the board.
That was all we needed. We used to do a secretary or something, didn't we?
Well, we did have a planning board for sure.
Nobody wanted that to.
We leave that to you.
Okay, the zoning board, the bylaws, do we have anything to talk about or not?
I looked at.
I think they were covered, I think. I think we had any question, it was one thing we had.
I looked at them today and my thought process in it is that on page two of them, it were, it starts three disqualification, four order of business, and then there's that little side note that we had put in because Peter White was encouraging us to go and do site visits, but it wasn't given a number, it was just listed in, and I really think that should be moved to four, four made five, and then five made six and seven. So kind of make it so that it's not just a sentence stuck in there, it has more of a place. And I do think we need to discuss the fact that on page one, where it talks about quorum, that a quorum has to be three sitting board members, not to include an alternate before the meeting can be opened. Because an alternate can't be appointed until the meeting is opened, which means that there has to be three members present before the meeting can be opened to do that. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah. So the wording is okay?
So we'd need to add that in, that a.
A quorum for all meetings of the board shall be three members, including alternates, sitting in place of regular members.
But three members has to be.
Right, you have to have three members to open the meeting, because the alternate doesn't get appointed until the meeting is open, so that's. I think that's where some of the.
So this wording is confusing.
Is that a state thing?
Yeah, it's, it's three members.
Okay.
Three.
I mean, a quorum means you can open.
And, and you don't have a quorum until you have three members.
But it says, including alternates. Now, we can change that if the state tells us to change it.
We looked into it, correct? Would you please?
So we put this to.
Right, I think this should say, I, I think if you read it right, it says, the board shall be three members, three, it should say three.
Excluding alternates.
Correct.
Right, that's what it should say.
And.
But.
But that's driven by a state thing.
Yeah, and, and our legal team.
So we talked to legal, our old town lawyer, said that they left.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with it, just make it clear, 'cause, 'cause we didn't know what to do, I was the only one here.
Right, and you have to have an officer to appoint the, the.
Since it said including alternates, we thought we were okay.
Hopefully we will never go through that again, but it seems as though we're hitting a lot of new things in the year.
So simply said.
Should we say not included or not including alternates?
Excluding.
A, a quorum for all meetings shall be three elected members.
Yeah, three.
Excluding alternates.
Well, an alternate is not an elected member.
Right, excluding.
By the town election, yeah.
Yeah, the board show could, yeah, three elected members, I think if we do it that way. Well, then it says including alternates, but that's, that should be something different there, we should.
Well, the thing is that.
We could put not including alternates.
Yeah, or excluding, both, they both mean the same thing.
Yeah.
That's, the thing is that alternates can be, are included in the vote, and I think that's where this is coming from. But. In order to open the meeting, you have to have that quorum.
Right, you have to have three elected members.
Do you wanna check with NHNA on wording for that?
On wording for that?
Correct. So that we are totally within legal boundaries on that and have a, just shoot us a reply that you get from them so that this could be ready for us to vote on at the next meeting? Thank you.
So what was your other fixed part about drive by the site, you wanna make that a separate?
I do, I want, I'd, I'd like to see that as number four. And then four made number five.
You want four as five?
This would be four. This would be four. And then four would be five, and then five, six, and six, seven.
You wanna make this five, and this five is gonna be six, and this is gonna be four.
Correct.
Like that.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you, Kevin?
So, number four.
Becomes number five.
Becomes number five. What would be number four, is it where it says ZB members?
Yeah.
Correct.
So you wanna move that ahead?
Correct.
Make that four and then that five, and then change the number.
Correct, I think it flows better in the, in, with the order that's there.
Right, because I.
As it is a number versus just a statement that's, that's there.
Um, should I call it, so they all have that in, should I call it site, uh, site, uh?
You could do site walk.
Yeah, site walk, site visit.
Site visit.
Is what's in the wording.
And, and while we're on something that's ahead of. Is it an inconvenience for you to get us the packets a week prior?
I apologize that Terry did mention.
I did mention.
Yeah, I should, I, I apologize, I should get it used, and I understand why, so, yeah, we didn't know it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, you should get it, at least.
I, I didn't think about it, but now.
Yeah, 'cause we gotta, you know, these two, you know, there was one thing, but.
You, I understand, you, you guys give time if you want.
'Cause some of them are like way out.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem, and that, I will definitely a hundred percent give it up to you guys.
Thank you, and just so you know, I've written on my calendar to call you the Monday prior. Do you have, do you have it? Just because I like to physically have mine in hand, because I read it and I mark it up and I make annotations on it so that we try and keep the meeting flowing.
If you guys want, I can send it to you.
I'd like a paper copy, I can't, I didn't.
I can mail it.
Oh.
Like, that's what I do with, like, anything. I think that's sometimes when I get a little bit confused, 'cause of mailing one, printing some, uh, like doing, you know, sometimes. I got no more mailing option, 'cause I do that through, for the.
I'm only a minute away, so I have mine coming.
No, I got, right, right.
For anybody else? Do you want to?
Do you guys mind me mailing, stop mailing them?
It would, it would be more convenient for me, yes, and I am definitely in hands, like you.
Yeah, I can mail them too.
Perfect.
Well, either you, either you do it globally or you don't do it, so. So if the, if it's a consensus to mail, mail to everyone all the time. So yes, mail.
Just so you go, ah, did he want it mailed or not?
Yeah, it's, yeah, that way, that way you don't miss one or. I mean, I usually get a chance to read it, but I usually don't get a chance to print it and then do the, the due diligence at home.
So when you come in, I will not have folders, like, I'll have your folders, but I'll, I'll put those in and everything, but. Your folder will be relatively there unless I get new stuff coming in.
Right, and the folders anyway have our order of the meeting, should have the zoning ordinance, has our bylaws. So it, it's helpful to still have those.
The stuff we use every, every month.
We could use, like, I've got, uh.
Yeah, I totally agree with you.
Two thousand nineteen, so.
New york, new york zoning ordinances?
Yeah.
I'll update, uh, FYI, we're actually getting new zoning ordinances that have to be approved, that have to be made. Any more meetings, we need more hours. That's why I have that, so it beats into me.
So you'll update then?
You'll be meeting after that anyways, so it's.
We'll have twenty twenty-two.
You'll have twenty twenty-two.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, good.
Is, um, Brady, someone ought to come up?
She did not get appointed, right?
No, she didn't, well, she would come here, I mean. Did we appoint her or did we?
She hasn't been, she hasn't been torn in. I know we kinda talked about, she missed the deadline, another exact conversation of, oh, but I haven't really, she hasn't been.
I think she's gone this week someplace, I think that's what. 'Cause I heard from her, she was gonna be off someplace, I think this week, so.
And I think, April is the same month for electing officers as it is appointing alternates. And, 'cause that's in our bylaws. And so somebody who wishes to be an alternate needs to come before the board and state it, and then as a board, we approve there being alternates. Is that listed?
Where does it say that? Do we wanna change, I mean. This last month, we, we kept March open somewhat without a meeting, but. Do you wanna move the election officers back to March or?
This says April.
Right. We have all.
Because the town meet, town election.
Right.
Is in March, so then we can do the election in April.
Okay, which tip?
Kevin, it's on members and alternates, the very top of the bylaws and rules, and it is number two. Shall consist up to five alternate members, each a resident of the town, appointed by the regular members of the zoning board. The term of an alternate member shall be three years in accordance with RSA six seven three colon six.
But you mentioned April.
But it's, the appointment of members is in April.
I see chairperson and vice, April. Should it be alternates also?
That was my understanding of it, unless, I mean, 'cause that's when the election stuff and everybody is being appointed and you're choosing your chair and your vice chair. You want us to add the word again, April in there?
Should there be a four saying alternates? Shall be sworn in in the month of April?
I think you could appoint alternates. I would think you could do it anytime, because.
You can, but what I'm saying is for someone like Kevin who has been on our board for a while, and you had to be re-s sworn in, right, this time?
Right, that was his problem, he hadn't, he's.
I am sworn in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you were.
But, um. Should that be on a April cycle, just like the elections are on an April cycle? So in other words, a new person comes in in August and you appoint them, they get sworn in three years later. Do they get sworn in in August or should it be on an April cycle? It makes sense to make it all the same.
Right, it does.
I agree, and I, I don't know what, if the deal is, Lori would be the one to answer that part of it. I would imagine. I know that typically, that unless the people say, we don't want this alternate, and I've never had that happen, people just get re-s sworn in again. But I don't know of anybody that.
It's just a chance to miss it.
Exactly, which is why I was saying April.
'Cause I've been missed and. And I had a, and I couldn't come or something, that was a few years ago.
Yeah.
Just a thought, just to make it.
Make it April.
Most of your mind, that way.
Can we add that, check and see if we can add that? Stipulation? All these things come up as life gets busy.
So you might add that under officers, under, for, for, make a new four?
Or you could just add it to three.
Well. Three is all officers shall serve one year.
The term of, I'm sorry, two, two, the term of alternates shall be three years.
Alternates are three.
And then add in there that.
And, or something like and appointed in April or something.
Right.
Well, what does RSA?
It doesn't say.
Six, three, seven, say?
Kevin, it doesn't.
Six, three, seven. Six, three, seven. Six, three, seven.
One, eight, three, eight, seven.
Six, seven, three, six. Six, seven, eight. Six, seven, three, six, six, seven, eight.
What do you just so long, whatever it is?
Okay, tell the same.
Can page numbers be added? The problem with that is the page numbers change, which is why they don't, because when these are updated, the pages be very different. The law itself, it usually remains the same unless they add to a section, but. No, I'm saying on ours, on our. Oh, on our page, huh? Yes, yes, on these. They are except for the first page, aren't they? No, there's no page number. Oh, I thought they were. That's why there's only, I know, there's only three pages, but just because, it's just, when you were referencing before, I was going, you know, you knew this. Mm-hmm. And you were saying that, and I'm like, well, where is that, and then I started reading, and I was like, okay, if you had said page two, I would have, I would have, we'd been there, and. I'm sorry. No, 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 that's fine, it's just, it just makes it easier. Mm-hmm. You're right, it does, and I should be more aware of the fact that you're still new with this, I apologize. All right, are we done with the?
We're done.
Do we need to discuss the case further?
We did that one, right?
So we're not doing further on the case, okay, approval of minutes, then. Anything from anybody on the minutes? We received them last, for the last meeting, and didn't get a chance to approve them, 'cause we didn't have a quorum.
We didn't really have a meeting.
That's why I said, we didn't have a quorum.
So we didn't have any.
So, Mr. Chair, if we approve the minutes of one eighteen twenty-two, two fifteen twenty-two, two twenty-two twenty-two. Has written, and then amendments that have been made. Oh, I'm sorry, you are, you are correct. Forgive me on that. So one eighteen is a non-meeting, so.
Yeah, that was the meeting, it wasn't a meeting, right?
Did the lawyer say how that should be referenced in, on the folder, or in the mid, for that meeting? Because we can't say there wasn't a meeting, because they did hold a meeting, and even though the applicant wasn't here, a butters and stuff were heard, and a decision was made. So we can't just ignore that that happened, but we, there should be a cover sheet or something that states that after legal review, this case, this was considered null and void, or some such thing, don't you think?
I haven't got him back on that, but I can ask.
Yeah, I mean, we should probably.
There's gotta be some kind.
There should be, it should be null and void, it should be, so that.
How do we?
I guess if somebody came in, it's, you know, somebody could say, oh, they already had a variance on that, and they got denied, so.
Right, and that shouldn't happen.
Right.
There's gotta be some kind of process in place, or, or talk to it.
I think if it was an illegal meeting, I mean, it was, you know, not done right, so.
Well, did legal, did legal give us a written answer?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
I therefore did.
Get to all of us.
Yes, you did, yeah.
So that should, that in part is the cover letter.
Correct. Correct.
I don't see it in here.
He emailed it to us.
Yeah, that was, uh.
Yeah, emailed it, yeah.
Few weeks ago. It, it was before the last meeting, right?
No, it hasn't.
No, it wasn't.
No, it was absolutely.
Because you hadn't, hadn't gone with them, and I said, please do so for our next meeting, and it was within a week or two after our last meeting that you got back to us on it, but you sent it by email.
You did email it over.
You did.
Yeah, January, it was, uh, three, eight.
Three, eight, that is, I'm very.
Twenty-two, yeah. Did you get, did you get that?
I believe, yes, I, I read that. I don't know, just a.
We should probably, uh.
Cover letter.
We can incorporate that into the.
It's right here, I got the three, eight.
'Cause they have a case file, right?
Yeah.
We could incorporate this letter into the case file, if you wanna, just so that it's there, somebody's looking at the file, we know what.
And along with, it has to be with the meeting minutes that were taken, because those actually happened, even though, and it can't be approved as a meeting, because it wasn't a meeting, but, ah, it's, this is tough, again, another thing that's never happened before. Treading new waters.
Why don't I ask, why don't I get clarity, say, hey, what do we do with minutes, what do we do with the fact, how do we denote that, you know, clearly, we're there, something happened? How is it that we go forward with addressing that, or, you know, maybe some kind of indication that what happened, or, that what didn't happen? There's gotta be some kind of.
Yeah, you can't just turn a blind eye to it.
We didn't approve these minutes, right?
No, we didn't.
What's that?
No, we did not approve those minutes.
It's all easy to approve them, yeah.
So if we don't approve them, then.
None of you were here to, you can't approve them anyways.
Well, I think you can.
You can.
You can.
You can.
You can vote on them, even if you weren't here, doesn't make sense, but you can.
I've, I've asked at a, at an NHMA meeting, if I'm not at a meeting, should I vote on the minutes, and they said, yes, you can, because it's not the fact that you were there, it's validating the fact that the meeting happened in your, in your, um, in the, the minutes that are taken by your, by your scribe, by your secretary or clerk.
Right, but if we don't approve these minutes, then that gives you a hint that something was wrong.
Right.
So we have, we're approving the two twenty-two?
Yes, I will revoke my prior motion and re-move for approval of minutes of two fifteen twenty-two, two twenty-two twenty-two.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for two fifteen, is that?
Yes.
Two fifteen.
Two twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and two twenty-two twenty-two. All those in favor? If you were saying aye, aye. Although, if you wanna abstain, you can abstain, one abstention.
Move to adjourn?
I'll second.
Anybody has anything?
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor? If you aye, aye. Even Kevin voted, I think, on that.